Apache Junction City Council Meeting to Order. The pledge will be led by Councilmember Evans and the prayer by Vice Mayor Wilson.
Heavenly Father, we are again gathered together this evening on this very warm evening to perform city business. Please be with us as we discuss and make decisions that continues to help keep our community a place to live, work, have a business, and raise a family. We are again at the time of the year when we're experiencing some wildfires. We ask for your protective hands for our firefighters that are currently trying to control the fire in the Heber Over Guard area. Protect them and everyone and all the lives in the area. Keep them all safe. We also ask for your protective hand for our first responders. Keep them all safe and return home at the end of their shifts each and every day. We want to extend this protection to our military members and their families wherever they're serving throughout the world. In the Lord's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Sertie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Barker?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans?
Here.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Present.
Councilmember Struble?
Here.
Councilmember Waldron?
Here.
All members present, do you have a quorum, Your Honor?
We have a motion on the consent agenda.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that the consent agenda be accepted as presented and that the award of bid for project number PR-18-01 Landscape Maintenance Services for Renaissance Point, Aurora Verity, Phelps Drive, Phases One and Two, Royal Palm Road, Ironwood Drive Exit, Goldfield Road Exit, Tomahawk Road Exit, Idaho Road Exit, Plaza Drive, Old West Highway, Median North Apache Trail Public Works Facility and Paws and Claws Care Center be awarded to Bright View Landscape Services Incorporated in the amount of $133,928.68 plus 15% for unforeseen change orders in the amount of $20,089.30 for a total amount not to exceed $154,017.98 and that authorization be given for the mayor to sign the agreement and that the award of bid for project number PWC 2018-02 Phelps Drive Channel Extension be awarded to Viason Corporation for improvements to the Phelps Drive drainage channel in partial fulfillment of fiscal year's 2018-19 Street Maintenance Plan through Pinell County Cooperative Contract Number EC-15-008-04 in the amount of $101,297.90 plus 10% for unforeseen change orders in the amount of $10,129.79 for a total amount not to exceed $111,427.69 and that authorization be given for the mayor to sign the agreement and that the bids submitted for representation of indigent defenders in the municipal court be rejected due to unresponsiveness and irregularities in the procurement process and staff is directed to rebid the solicitation in the fall of 2018 and that approval be given to the proposed First Amendment to the indigent defense contracts for representation of indigent defendants in the municipal court and that Presiding Magistrate James W. Hazel, Jr., be authorized to negotiate contract extensions for the current defense service providers, William J. Perlman and Karen Nicely, with an extension term to expire on December 31, 2018.
Second.
That was an excellent job, Robin, and we have a second. We did have a second already, Kathy.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor.
Recognition by the mayor and city council of individuals and organizations who have made donations to support city activities, programs, and projects. Recipients may wish to be here. And Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Roger Hacker, Revenue Development. It's that time again during this quarter when we take a step back and we thank the individuals and the businesses and the local organizations that help us support projects and needs in our community without using tax dollars. This would not be possible if it wasn't for a hand-in-glove relationship with Friends of Apache Junction, a local nonprofit organization that has been instrumental in working with the city. Bottom line, we just want to say thank you. Thank you to the generous people in Apache Junction, Gold Canyon, the generous businesses in both communities, and the generous organizations in both communities. Because of them, we are able to meet city needs without using tax dollars, and that is an incredible advantage that our community has and our region has. Because of their generosity, we are able to do some incredible things here. If I could just step back and share a story with you and everyone in the audience as to why do we take this time and why do we do what we do to thank our donors. A few weeks ago, I was looking through our donor database, and I noticed that since November of last year, we have had three donations from a family in Glendale. I thought, Glendale, Apache Junction, there's a few miles between here and there. So, I called the donor, and first of all, I thanked her and the family, and I said, "Why? Why do you donate? You don't live here, you don't use any of our services." She said that she had found a need online at Paws and Claws. She called down there, was treated very professionally and very courteously by the staff, so she decided to make a donation. Upon making that donation, she gets a thank you letter from Chief Kelly. She makes another donation, she gets a thank you letter from the city council, and after the next donation, she gets an invitation from Friends of Apache Junction to come to a reception. She said that told her that her donations were appreciated and that she was making an impact in our community. She said she is going to continue to donate to our community, and that's why we take the time tonight, and that's why we do what we do. First of all, we would like to thank all of those employees at the school district that every paycheck contribute to there. They're not able to be with us tonight, and each pay period, there's thirty-some employees that donate and have amounts taken out. We'd like to thank the couple that live in Washington State, are with us only a few months during the winter, for their generous donation to Paws and Claws. The police department is in the process of reordering and getting new radio equipment, and we'd like to thank the Gila River Indian Community for their support of that effort. Video cameras, which Chief Kelly is going to talk a bit about later and explain the importance of that, we would like to thank our American Legion Post 27 for their support. Helping the police department reach vulnerable citizens in our community, we'd like to thank the Walmart Superstore, Ms. Kirk, the manager was supposed to be here, she was called away at the last minute, but we would like to thank them for supporting that and everything else that they support. Back to the video cameras, we would like to thank Superstition Mountain Rotary Club, who this evening is going to be represented by Mr. Aaron McDermott. Mayor, would you like to come on down for a photo opportunity? And Mr. McDermott? Now, this next check was a really big one because it supported the Police Auxiliary, the Police Explorers, the Running Club, and Parks and Recreation Scholarship Program. I'd like to ask Chief Kelly to come up and give you a little bit of background on why the auxiliary and the explorers are so important to our community, and after he has done, Liz Langenbach, our Parks and Recreation Director, will do the same for the donations to Parks and Recreation. Chief Kelly?
Thank you, Rog. Chief Kelly, Apache Junction Police Department, City Council, Mayor. One of the main important parts of the contributions that was made in this one in regards to the auxiliary and the explorers is the auxiliary serves in multifaceted purposes for our department. They handle a lot of traffic control, so the monies that were donated to support the auxiliary during this latest function, that money will be utilized for extra equipment and things they need for traffic control and then crime scenes, and also supports the explorer program, which you all know is our youth that have an interest in some phase of law enforcement, and they get an idea of what maybe roles they could be in, whether it's actually a patrol position or a law enforcement position, or in forensics or one of the many other departments the function has. I was told to keep my part really short so the Parks and Rec Director could come up here and take most of my time. So, without too much to do, I just wanted to thank everybody that made the donations for the explorers and the auxiliary for contributing to that function. It helps a lot, and without further ado, the queen of Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening, Liz Langenbach, Parks and Recreation Director. I know we haven't gotten to the slide yet to reveal who our big donor is, but Lost Dutchman Marathon Incorporated is who we are thanking right now for their generous donations. After the proceeds of their race, once their race is finished, they give back all of their proceeds to largely local youth-serving agencies, but also other agencies that help with this important race and this important event in our community. So, not only is the event super important in bringing people to our community and just being a great event here, but it gives so much back, and we are going to be inviting a member up to come in from Lost Dutchman Marathon Incorporated to share a little bit more about what they do and why they do it. But I just wanted to mention for our part, we're so very thankful. So, you know, several thousands of dollars were given towards auxiliary, the explorers, and then a couple of our running clubs. So, our Girls on the Run Program, as well as our new downtown running series that we started this last year that will be continuing in bigger force next year thanks to their donation. But the biggest way that they contribute back to the Parks and Rec Department is through our youth scholarship fund. So, that serves, it's about $18,000 that they're giving this year. It fully funds all of the requests that we get during the whole entire year for swimming lessons, all of our sports clinics and tournaments and leagues, as well as our before and after school programs, as well as out-of-school time programs. So, that's huge. There's not any community that has one donor that gives that amount back to the scholarship to make sure that all kids are able to participate in things. So, that is all that I have to say, and we're so very terribly thankful for everything that they do. And I'd like to introduce right now Kristy Fob, the President of Lost Dutchman Marathon Incorporated, to come up and to just share a few quick words, and then we'll have a picture with the mayor.
Thank you, Liz. I am Kristy Fob. I am the new president of the marathon this year, Grady McCann. If you remember him from before, he's always done it. I have taken over this year. I've been on the race for quite some time, and I found it's a great benefit because of everything that we gain and are able to give back to not only all of the great recipients that Liz had talked about and pay-to-play and all of the wonderful scholarship programs, but in addition, just showing the great aspects that our community has to offer that people aren't aware of. We're able to bring people in from all over the country, some of them outside of our country and all over the United States that love to come in, and none of them know what it's like sometimes until they get here and really get to gain a good perspective of everything about this area and the difference that this side of the valley has to offer, and it's a great benefit to us. We could never do that without all the great help that we get from obviously Parks and Rec and all the wonderful people that come along that get the race started, help get the grounds all ready. You know, we have the wonderful police department that goes and makes sure that we can keep everyone safe. Such a wonderful community event. We have the auxiliary, the city council, I mean, it's just a wide, the mayor, everyone being involved in making sure that we can make it a great success, and we've been able to do that since 2002. This year, we were able to give $60,000, which is great. Every single person's a volunteer that's trying to promote it and put their time forth, a total of over $588,000 so far that we've been able to give back with this whole community's, you know, contribution and doing it as a group effort. So, wanted to say that, and we are very excited and happy to be a part of that and be able to give back.
We're going to get the reps from LDM, and we'll have our picture.
Every year, I volunteered for a lot of years, five years, something like that.
Yeah.
And for many years, we had an older woman from Russia that would come. The woman was 67 the last time I drove, and they ran the phone there. If you can imagine that. It literally comes from a little tiny woman.
If I could step back a second, I neglected to mention that the people that we are honoring tonight have been selected and met criteria that were established by a citizens committee that the council approved their recommendations back in November 2016. I would like every donor to know that every donation, big or small, is very much appreciated and very much helps our community. Chief Kelly, would you like to come and talk a bit more about the video? And I do have to compliment Liz Langenbach and Chief Kelly, them standing next to each other, that was the best behavior I've seen them in a long time.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council. The video camera project was one of those end-of-the-year projects that I had come across with command staff in a way to figure a way to give more liability, coverage, and protection not only to our community, but for the city in regards to any potential lawsuits that may be filed when we utilize video. The idea was to use the video cameras within our detention vans. If you all remember, a year or so ago, in a city outside of Arizona, was involved in a situation where a person that was being taken into custody was placed inside of the back of a detention van, and there was an injury incurred on the person. Well, most detention vans do not have audio, they don't have video inside the vehicles when they're normally put together. So, we thought one way to protect ourselves and the officers and as well as the potential defender, the suspect, is we transported from the police department to the Florence Center down, or Detention Center down in Florence, is they have a video camera in there. And the purpose was to protect the individual that's being transported, because you know, traveling from Apache Junction to Florence, it sometimes can take 35 to 45 minutes, and sometimes these people are either inebriated or have some other medical condition, and when the driver, detention officer's driving, we have no way of knowing what is happening in back of the van without the video. So, as of recently, and actually as of tonight, we've reached our goal of actually getting the full payment so we can make the payment to have the video cameras installed in both of our detention vans in hopes of protecting not only the persons being transported, but should something happen in the back where a person may get out and get out to the general public, or the officers that may have to get in the van to take care of an individual back there. So, it protects all facets of the community, but we actually have reached our goal. So, I'm not saying that we don't need anything for any other special projects that come up, but this one is officially being closed out because we have received the funds. And I have to give accolades to Friends of Apache Junction because what we do, as the council does, is when we ask for money to be utilized for funds for a project, you hold us accountable to use the funds for what they're intended for. And I just went before the board yesterday asking for funds for something, and they actually asked all the right questions to make sure those funds are expended for exactly what the people donate the money for. So, between friends and you and staff, we've been able to do that. So, that's the basis of why we're going with the video cameras, and as Roger had pointed out, doesn't make any difference if you're sending $5, $10, or $30,000 or $40,000, it can be utilized, and it's utilized for the purpose it's intended for. So, thank you.
We have with us tonight, from the Elks Lodge 2349, the Exalted Ruler Heather McClellan. Heather, would you like to come on up and say a few words?
Good evening. Every year, the Elks Lodge has a chance to put in for grants to help not only our community, but our different organizations out here. It was my choice to be able to help the police department this year. They are one of the people who are always there. First responders are very important, and being the sister of a law enforcement, I know how scary it can be. So, on behalf of the Elks Lodge and the officers, we would like to give the police department $4,000 to reach their goal.
And as everybody knows, Phelps travel and pass.
I'd like to ask Liz Langenbach, Parks and Recreation Director, to come back up and explain the significance of these programs.
So, we have many programs and events, and we're always looking for donors to kind of enhance a lot of those so that we can make them special for our community. This particular donor has contributed every year as a result of the Lost Dutchman Days festivities, and we are one of their many, many benefactors as well. They contribute so much to our community, but we have been able to utilize some of the dollars that they donate towards our Superstition Sleepover, which is an annual event where families get to be out on the field. Some of them, they maybe haven't been outdoors camping or haven't gone far, and it's a great way just to get their kids out there and to try it for the first time. Others are total old hats at camping, but it's kind of cool to be out in the softball fields and camping out there in the day and letting Parks and Rec and the volunteers treat them to a night. Our egg hunt, all of our family events, those are all things that fall under this category that the funds that are donated go back to. And so, one of the things that I think has always been one of the sayings of the Lost Dutchman Days founder and through their days is always they're putting smiles on kids' faces, so they continue to do that every single year, and at Parks and Recreation, they help us to do that. So, we're very thankful to their donation. And so, we would like to bring up Lost Dutchman Days. I think we have Heather McClellan again that is speaking. And so, Heather will say a few words, and then we'll get another photo op.
It's me again. Lost Dutchman Days is actually ran strictly by volunteers, and it's different organizations throughout Apache Junction that's helped us put this on for the past 54 years. All the money that we raise for Lost Dutchman Days goes directly back into this community to every child that's out here, whether it be Little League, Parks and Rec, the Booster Club. We want to make sure that every kid can have a smile on their face. So, with that being said, I would like to invite my queens and our 50/50 partners, which is the AJ Mounted Rangers, who do all of our security, up to join me for the photo op.
And but certainly not least, we'd like to recognize a group of very dedicated and generous residents of Gold Canyon that did just an incredible project for Paws and Claws. And Chief Kelly, do you want to?
You sick of semen yet?
Yes.
Thank you. This was one of those surprise projects that we have, an individual that'll be up here in a little bit that has volunteered at Paws and Claws for a while and came up with this brainstorm to soliciting members of her community to do a fundraiser. And when she first proposed it, she proposed that the event would be run a certain way, and she had these grandiose ideas on how it was going to be happening. She solicited some friends, which I think are still friends, and got them to do a fundraiser, and it was a one-day fundraiser that they held out in their community, and they raised, and I'm going to give you a raw amount, but it was over $55,000 in one evening, for dedicated for the Paws and Claws Center. And it's because of their care for the animals and obviously because of the care that they see the staff out there giving to the animals that do come in there. But without too much ado, the whole idea came across, and Roger and I had met with it a couple times, and I thought it was like, there's no way they were going to pull this off, but they did that and then some, because even after that, then it came with some more money that people had donated that weren't able to attend the function. So, that's all gone to the Paws and Claws for upgrading some of the equipment they have out there, building another room that the people that do come in, make the adoptions, can actually interact with the animals to find out if they're a good fit for the families that are doing the adoptions, and a multitude of other things that just normally doesn't fit within budget or emergency that arise to take care of them. But these people went above and beyond and above my expectations, and they did a phenomenal job, and I would like to challenge them to do it again for another project now, and I'm sure that they are doing it, but I know one of the ladies says that Paige is maybe still on the friendship list, but we're not sure about it anymore. But they worked very hard to put this together, and there was a lot of issues going back and forth on liabilities, back and forth, that I don't know, the city attorney played into and Roger and the community at large. But if I could have Rog come back up and you can call our wonderful donors up.
And representing the generous folks in Gold Canyon are Paige and Kathy, and I believe Paige has a few comments she'd like to make, and I didn't recognize her because usually when I see her, she's coming from
I don't know how many of you know where Superstition Mountain is, but we're a little community of about nine hundred people, about twenty percent of which are full-timers, who live in a community at the end of Superstition Mountain Drive in Gold Canyon. And we're an older community. Most of us do have white hair. I'm the only one with purple. But I'd say the average age is about sixty-two. But it's, you know, it's a young community, and, you know, as far as old people go. But they're spry, and they're engaged, and they have oftentimes, and in many ways, shared their generosity with our neighboring communities. We've held fundraisers for cancer research, Boys and Girls Club of Superstition, Sunshine Acres Children's Home, and a whole bunch of other ones that I can't remember right now. So I thought, you know, I have a shot here, probably one shot, at trying to raise some money or get some money from these people for Paws and Claws. So our little committee of eight got together, and it took us about a year. And yeah, we had some roadblocks thrown up, but we managed to get through them and held this little fundraiser, and raised not fifty-five, but sixty-one thousand dollars plus for Paws and Claws Care Center through Friends of Apache Junction. And we really appreciate Roger's help throughout all of this. He paved the way for a lot of the work that we had to do. And while we appreciate this recognition, I do have to say that I think the real people who deserve recognition here are the staff at Paws and Claws Care Center. I don't know when you all were last there, but I think you would be amazed at how hard they work and how they do so much with so little. You know, Laurie Erdlinsen and Jenny Flood are here supporting this, but they're the ones who really deserve the recognition. They see the best and they see the worst of human nature every day. And they keep coming in, and they keep working so hard to help this community deal with their animal problems. You know, they work hard, along with the volunteers, because they've got a good cast of volunteers to take care of the lost, the sick, the injured, the unwanted animals in this community. And it's important, and they do great work. So personally, I'd like to thank them and give them an applause. So with that, thanks again for the recognition. I don't know if we'll ever do it again. But actually, the community enjoyed it thoroughly. They would like to do it again. So I don't know, one of these days Kathy, if she ever starts speaking to me again, she was the one who handled the money. And, yeah. And unfortunately, we did this during tax season, and she's a tax accountant, so the timing was really bad, but she'll just have to deal with it.
Bill, hang on, Bill. Did your husband play a role in this at all?
Well, he had to put up with me. Yeah.
Just to wrap up, and again thanking all of the donors, since you started this process back on November first, two thousand sixteen, we've had eight hundred and eighty-four individual donors or organizations contribute three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars to support thirty-seven different projects in the city. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank all of you guys.
Yes.
Unbelievable.
And we have a very special presentation from Bryant Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, doesn't happen that often, we have a twenty-five-year milestone. And I'd like to turn it to Kathy to start it, and then I will, when you're done Kathy, take it from there. Thank you all too from the city manager. That is awesome, awesome, before they head out.
The person is getting the twenty-five-year recognition is Jan Mason, who is our deputy city clerk. Jan began working for the city in May nineteen ninety-three as an assistant dispatcher in the police department. She moved into the city clerk department in April nineteen ninety-six as deputy city clerk. She became a certified municipal elections officer in nineteen ninety-eight. That's not an easy feat, because it takes three years of required training and then passing a college-level exam on election procedures. Jan is responsible for many of the things you see here at council meetings, such as the council packet and the meeting minutes, including the eighty-page set of minutes from the last council meeting, which, as I recall, ended at about quarter to twelve. She assists with city elections, responds to public records requests, provides backup when someone is out, and speaks at the Citizen Leadership Institute on the role and responsibilities of the city clerk department. Last month, and mostly last week, she accepted the nomination petitions and election forms from city council candidates. During council meetings, she is in the media room, preparing the meeting summary, and popping in here from time to time to remind us to turn on our microphones. I want to thank Jan for the help and support she has provided to me, to others in the city clerk department and other departments, to the mayor and council and the community. And I'll turn it over to Bryant.
So everyone, this is Jan Mason, deputy city clerk. Jan, come on over here. Twenty-five years. We're so grateful for her service to the community. She's given so much of her time and talents to help keep us straight, keep our elections going. And Jan works during this period of time behind the scenes, and keeps our agendas and keeps everything flowing so that information flows properly to the public. So Jan, I'm going to do a couple things. First, as part of the twenty-five-year time, you get a year of service certificate, a twenty-five-year plaque, forty hours of paid time off, this is the stuff that really matters, forty hours of time off, and then also monetary award. And I'd like to take a moment just to read the plaque. And then Mayor, once you're down, will you please come down, and we'll take a photo? Jan Mason, with deep appreciation and thanks for your twenty-five years of service to the city of Apache Junction, May thirty-first, nineteen ninety-three to May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Will everyone please join me in giving Jan a huge thank you?
Thank you, Jan.
Now I'm going to go back to my hiding hole.
Announcements and current events. Anybody?
I do.
Jeff Struble.
All right. I've got a couple, actually three things. If everybody's been reading the newspaper and watching the news, you guys saw that Logan, I hope I say it right, Logan Reichwald, is representing Apache Junction at the National Junior High Rodeo, National Junior High Rodeo, up in Huron, South Dakota. He won the state bull riding championship, and he'll be going up there on, I think his mom said, on the nineteenth or the twenty-first of June, up to Huron. And so, just, he sounds like an amazing young man, and he's going to be representing Apache Junction really well. Back in May, I talked to you guys about the Keep Your Car and Truck Dirty Week, and I told you I'd give you the results. The Peralta Trail Building America Club, which consists of some fifth and sixth graders, go through a program during the year to help them develop their leadership, entrepreneurial, and just life skills. And one of the things they do at the end of the year is they develop and plan and implement and then operate a service project to the community. And this year, they chose to do a car wash on May twelfth, and they did it at the high school. And these kids did everything themselves. I was there just to tell them no, because sometimes adults have to do that. But they really worked hard. They raised five hundred dollars for a young boy who needed some surgery, one of their classmates. So just some big kudos to those kids. They really worked hard. And the one thing I learned from it as an adult in it was that I forgot how eleven- and twelve-year-olds react to donuts. I bought them a dozen donuts to start the day off, and they really went great for about two hours, and then they hit this wall. But then they bounced back and finished out the final two hours. So, great job. Then the last one is about a month ago, at this school board meeting, the Daughters of the American Revolution gave out some awards, or held a contest, I guess, for some second graders. And there was a group of our second graders at Desert Vista that wrote narratives, stories, made posters, and drew pictures to commemorate the hundredth anniversary, if you want to call it that, of the First World War, which back then was called the Great War. And some of the kids actually won the state competition and went on to the national competition for what they did. And it just is representative of what young kids can do when they're given the opportunity to perform and excel at what they can do. And they're just another great example of what we have coming up for the future of Apache Junction.
Well, of course, I have one. If anybody has been downtown around the Focal Point area, you will see that we have an incredible piece of art that was donated by local resident and renowned artist Merrill Orr. And it was such a team effort to get that thing there. He was able to get the materials donated. He then worked on it, and is very meticulous. And a lot of people, it was kind of cool that they got to see it being built. Anybody that lived on Superstition or drove by there, you got to see this thing being constructed, and it was a big mystery. And we had to have a crane out there twice to hoist it up, to put the head on it, and that was the Arizona Crane donated their time to do that. And then, of course, the Arizona Tire Man hauled it over here, and Police Department and Public Works. The only expenses to the city was the staff's time. And it was just a great team effort, and we're hoping that this leads to other pieces being donated, and just adds to the beauty of the downtown. So, also, it's dry out there. There's fire restrictions everywhere. If they're out of town, that means it's in town too. Everything will burn. Be careful with everything you're doing, and make sure horses and dogs and cats and everything have shade and water. And shouldn't even have to say that, but I've never seen it this dry in the thirty-some years that I've lived here. So everybody be careful out there. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I agree, we need to be very careful, a super-dry season right now, and I appreciate that message, Mayor, to the community. I just may mention that I'm very grateful for those who contribute and volunteer, not only their, the money is awesome and wonderful, helps us do great things, but the time and the energy and talents that are in this community to help support our family, our youth and group is so essential. And we thank those who support our Paws and Claws, our Parks and Rec, and police department so very much. Tonight, Your Honor, also happy to be able to present a thank you to Officer Harshman for five years of being our dare officer, and ask him to come on over here. I'd like to say a couple words. Marty? We are very proud of our dare program. We are one of the few communities that continues to invest in our youth in this manner, and we continue to see great outcomes from our youth being more energized and enthused to make commitments, to not take on anything that would be harmful to their bodies. And so, over the years, we've had great officers. Marty's no exception. He's done a wonderful job. I've been in, had two of my girls learn under Marty, and I'm very grateful that he makes that effort, and we're very grateful to Officer Harshman for five years of service to being our dare officer.
Can we get him to sing the dare song one last?
So we need a song, we need him to sing the song one last time. I know you could really do a great job with that, and it's a bunch of fifth graders. If you haven't had a chance to deal with them, it's great. Now, I'd like to use this opportunity to introduce to the community our new dare officer, Chief.
Mayor, city council, thank you for allowing me to take up all your time this evening. But in addition to what Marty has done, I was actually going to have him come back up before I introduced your new dare officer. You all have done like an amazing job in regards to the dare program. Our dare program has been going on when most other cities have stopped it, and they've stopped it because of economic issues. You, as a city council, past and present, have decided it was more important, or it was too important not to invest in it, and I agree a hundred percent, basically with my past experience with drug enforcement administration. I've seen the tragedies that our society has, has, and continues to have because of drug abuse. But Marty has taken this program from the dare program and enhanced it. And that was one of his charges, was to enhance the program from the dare program, to enhance it to deal with issues of bullying, to deal with issues of texting and sexting, and all the things that our youth today face that we never had to face before. The challenges that we never can even imagine between the internet, telephones, and everything else that's out there. He's taken that program and enhanced it to not only deal with that, but peer pressure in the schools, and dealing with issues with gangs and everything else. So I want to commend Marty for doing that and enhancing what his charge was to enhance the program. And with that, you didn't follow your direction and come back up there. The reason he's leaving the dare program is he was promoted. And with the promotion, he unfortunately has to leave the position to take on his new role as a corporal with the patrol division. But you also have never received your dare ribbon that you're supposed to have gotten. So not only do you have the dare ribbon in here, but you also have the four additional silver stars that go with that for serving in that position for five years plus. So congratulations. And now if I could introduce to your new dare officer, Carl Halpern, if he would come forward. Carl Halpern actually comes to us originally from, he was born and raised and spent most of his life, and not almost the entire life, in the Phoenix area. But he was, comes to us from Flagstaff Police Department, where he started there in two thousand and six. He served as the public information, the public information officer.
But Marty has taken this program from the Dare Program and enhanced it. And that was one of his charges was to enhance the program from the Dare Program, to enhance it to deal with issues of bullying, to deal with issues of texting and sexting and all the things that our youth today face that we never had to face before. The challenges that we never can even imagine between the internet, telephones and everything else that's out there. He's taken that program and enhanced it to not only deal with that, but peer pressure in the schools and dealing with issues with gangs and everything else. So I want to commend Marty for doing that and enhancing what his charge was to enhance the program. And with that, you didn't follow your direction and come back up here. The reason he's leaving the Dare Program is he was promoted. And with the promotion, he unfortunately has to leave the position to take on his new role as a Corporal with the Patrol Division. But you also have never received your Dare ribbon that you're supposed to have gotten. So not only do you have the Dare ribbon in here, but you also have the four additional Silver Stars that go with that for serving in that position for five years plus. So congratulations. And now if I can introduce to your new Dare Officer, Carl Halpern, if he would come forward. Carl Halpern actually comes to us originally from, he was born and raised and spent most of his life and almost the entire life in the Phoenix area. But he was, comes to us from Flagstaff Police Department where he started there in 2006. He served as the Public Information, the Public Information Officer out of Flagstaff, which also includes the Dare Program out there. So he was a great candidate to interview and be challenged for the new position. With that, Carl also has had the experience of teaching the numerous Dare classes when he was in Flag. And he came to us in 2012. But when he came here as a police officer, a lateral police officer from Flagstaff to Apache Junction, he brought some other talents with him besides the Dare and the instructor part. But he's also been active in the patrol. He was assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division for a while and he's still active in this, as an active member in the SWAT team. Carl currently is married. He's got three children, two boys, one girl, all under the age of nine. So I think he's a great candidate with Dare. He has been challenged to take over the role that Corporal Harshman has left and between the two of them, take that to the next level. So the challenge that his captain and I both have given him is to not do as well as Marty did, but do better than Marty did and enhance the program so our youth and our community can continue to try to make the right choices and grow up to be good students and good citizens. So with that, introduce Officer Carl Halpern, your new Dare Officer.
Thank you. That concludes our report.
Public hearing for application for a new license, Corporation Series 10 Liquor License for Circle K Store Number 2741647. Kathy Conley.
Your honor, this is a request for a new license for an old location. It is the Valero Station at Southern Avenue and Ironwood. If you've noticed, the changes in the signs throughout the valley, the Valero Stations, for the most part, are now becoming Circle K's. So as part of the legal process, Circle K has to apply to take over that particular site. In your packet, you have comments from Planning, Building, Police Department and the Fire District, all of whom have no objections to this new location license. The applicant has been notified of tonight's public hearing and asked to be present in the event you have any questions.
Will the applicant or spokesperson want to speak? And it looks like they did not make it after all. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the hearing. Is there any discussion? I just want to let everybody know that they did finally get in pizza in there. They remodeled it for about two years. They finally do have the quick pizza in there, so.
Yep.
And it's two-for-one on Sunday. So we'll call for a motion.
Your honor, I move that the application for a new license, Corporation Series 10 Liquor License for Circle K Store Number 2741647, submitted by Kim Kwiatowski, be recommended for approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Public hearing for renewal of off-track paramutual wagering permit at Mirage Sports Grill by Turf Paradise Race Course on behalf of Turf Paradise. Kathy Conley again.
Your honor, and this is something you only see every three years because this type of paramutual wagering license only requires that length of time for reconsideration. This particular one is for the Mirage Sports Grill, which is at 725 West Apache Trail. You have memos in your packet from Planning, Building, Police Department and Fire District, all of whom acknowledge they have no problems with this particular license being renewed. And in this instance, the applicant was also notified of tonight's public hearing in the event you have any questions.
Is the applicant here and would they like to speak? And I don't see one again. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the hearing. Any discussion among council? Doesn't appear to be. I'll call for a motion.
Your honor, I move that the request for renewal of the off-track paramutual wagering permit at Mirage Sports Grill submitted by Turf Paradise Race Course on behalf of the Turf Paradise be recommended for approval to the Arizona Racing Commission.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Struble.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron.
Yes.
Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Mayor Sertie.
Yes.
Unanimous, your honor.
Public hearing for possible motion for reconsideration of conditions of Resolution Number 1821 related to the May 15th approval of the Hitching Post Conditional Use Permit Event Center. Not long ago, we had a five-hour meeting and perhaps since in our rush to get out of here after five hours, some things didn't get looked at precisely. And we think that possibly on both sides, there might have been some things omitted. So council members Rizzi and Vice Mayor Wilson thought that we might look at this again and see if we can't tweak this and make it a little bit better. So Krista or Chip?
I think Chip's going to kick it off.
Yeah, I'll get it started. One of the things that we were looking at is the fencing and the time involved. And of course, one of the things that we did was we put a lot of requirements on fencing that really seemed to not necessarily fully agree with what the people in the area would like, as well as actually mitigating some of the problems that they are trying to eliminate. And so my suggestion on actually doing the reconsideration is be limited to just the fencing, the fencing locations and the height of fencing and the hours of operation, especially during the summertime, limiting it to seven to nine. It's hot out there. And starting the times at seven o'clock, it's still quite warm. And looking for the, I'll say not only the safety of the participants, but also the animals being involved, I think that that's something that we need to look at, very closely at. And so my suggestion is that we just look at those specific things and nothing else, really.
Your honor, if I can?
Yes.
When we had talked about the fencing, Chip, one of the things that you had mentioned, we had, I almost think we had a little bit of overkill with the fencing and I think that's part of what brought us here. I think the concern was to get the fencing high enough around the arena to mitigate the lighting and the noise and then to get some mitigation of vehicle lights going across the parking lot, to get some fencing there. But what we ended up doing, and again, I think after five hours, we probably just, we had hashed it out and hashed it out and tried listening to both sides, we ended up doubling up the fencing when you look at what we had done. And so I'd like to take a look at that and see if we can't narrow it down a little bit better. And again, maybe with the hours, like Chip had mentioned, maybe in the summertime, you know, even if we had summertime hours and then possibly wintertime hours, just to look at that, when, in the wintertime, when it gets darker sooner, maybe people are going to bed a little bit sooner, maybe keep it at the seven to nine, but possibly look at keeping it at the eight to 10 in the summertime when it's a little bit warmer. But that was my concern, was that we had did a little bit of overkill with that fencing. So if we could just look at that and maybe talk about what we could do to tweak it.
Can you explain what you mean by overkill and the fencing?
I think what we did is we ended up doubling up. We had had it around the arena. I don't have the map here in front of me. I wish I had the map. But we ended up putting 12-foot around the arena, around the backside of the house, around the front side of the house. And it just, there's places where it's doubled and tripled. And my thought was if we can just get the 12-foot around that arena, and I think the neighbors weren't real happy with the backside of how that western facade looks. I haven't seen the backside of it, but that was, and we put the 12-foot to mitigate the light and the sound, but then the neighbors said it's not real attractive. And so they were kind of wanting that eight-foot block in the parking area on the Cortez side where it would mitigate the lighting coming at them from the vehicles, from the headlights. But there wasn't the need for the 12-foot to be that far away and then the 12-foot to wrap around the, again, I don't have the map, so I could draw you a little picture, but other people wouldn't be able to see it. And so we just doubled up and tripled up on that 12-foot. If we could just get it, my thought was get that 12-foot around the arena to mitigate the light and the sound and then get them some, about eight-foot down on Cortez so that, you know, it blocks the.
One of the things, purpose of this is just actually to set a date, to bring it back for discussion, instead of trying to iron out the full details right now, but make a point of bringing it back. And I do suggest that we bring it back in the, say, the end of July timeframe. And that way, we can come up with some suggestions in the aspect that will meet the neighbors' goals and also not to have the triple in one particular area. And there's also some other areas where the fence is really not necessarily needed.
In front of the Elks.
Right. So.
Your honor? Your honor?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with bringing it back for the fencing, but that would be all that I would want to bring it back for because the original motion did not include that 12-foot fence around the whole darn thing. It included an eight-foot block wall, if you'll all remember, and then there was an amendment to that motion that included that duplicitous 12 feet. So I would be very interested in reconsidering the fencing itself, but I'm not really interested in anything else.
The motion did consider 12-foot around the Cortez side.
The amended, the amendment to the motion, the original motion called for an eight-foot block.
Any other opening statements from council?
I actually agree with Robin Barker that if it does come back, the only, the only item that we changed from city staff was the fence. And so that would be the only thing I would reconsider. It's hot at eight, it's hot at seven, that's just where we live.
But we did change the time from 10 back to nine, so that was changed.
Yeah.
That was changed also.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Joel, it says, will the applicant speak, but Krista and Chip are actually the applicants. Does anyone else consider the applicant here?
In this case, because this is a council-driven motion or proposed motion, all that's on the table is whether the council as a whole wants to consider any or all conditions. So essentially, it's just a regular public hearing where if no one else has anything else to say, then you would open it up to the public and each person would get five minutes, no matter who they are. And then you'd close the public hearing and then you would discuss again and then you would call for a motion.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on the issue?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We got worn out a few weeks ago. My name is Ralph Pugh and my office address is 1744 South Valvista Drive in Mesa. We would urge you to reconsider this item as you have discussed tonight with one addition to that, and that would be that if you limit, if you choose to limit the discussion to a few items of the conditions and you list what those are then and decide to have a new hearing, that's what you would be talking about. You run the risk then that some of these tie into each other, some of them are mixed with each other, they need to be blended. I would urge you tonight on behalf of Mo, the owner of the Hitching Post, to reconsider the conditions so that if you get to that meeting, whenever you decide to set it in the future, you have the flexibility to consider other items that will also perhaps be important. And Mo wants to talk for a minute about why this is important to him. But thank you very much, Mayor and council members. I would urge you to think about it in that light.
Your honor, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Pugh, did you contact any council members prior to this meeting?
Mayor, Councilmember Waldron, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, disappointed, remember it's a public hearing, so there are just no questions now. No questions and no conversation.
It's okay.
Sorry, Mr. Waldron.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, mires and council members, managers and city officials. Name is Mamulma Yudin, 2341 North Cortez Road, Apache Junction, Arizona. We have been talking about quite a few times for over six months about the CUP. The original problem with the CUP is the lighting and the noise. After the last meeting, I was working by the fence over there doing the dashboard meter reading and approached by Mr. Johnson. And we discussed that. He was all happy about it. He said he's going to talk to Mr. Stern and he's going to talk to other people. All right, that's fine. Now, is doubling, tripling up the fence is not going to solve the problem. We can build the fence where the bull riding, we're going to start all the way to the last attachment. 12-foot fence with the slats, however they requested, we can build that one. That will eliminate the sound. Their previous meeting and they showed the video, eight-foot wall, what is due, they parked the motor home, how much eliminate the sounds and all that stuff. If want to put 12-foot wall over there by the bull riding arena in the southeast, we'll be happy to do that. We want to make sure the neighbors are happy. And if they want an eight-foot block wall by the Cortez, it's going to look much nicer or we can do that, the slats on those ones, absolutely whatever has worked. That will solve the lighting problem, that will solve the noise problem. For example, the other condition that we have, the traffic study at ADOT. I went to the ADOT, asked them. They said this is not a new business, this is existing business. Traffic is at 20,000, 30,000, 10,000, 5,000, 2,000 cars going to the museum, golf field, goes down, every direction they are going is not impacting the Hitching Post. Now they built up the two wedding waiting over there. I see the traffic increase on that one. Is impacting the Hitching Post? No. The people passing through on those roads, they're going to their destinations. And finally, they found out the cost of the traffic study between 25 to $32,000. How I can afford to do all that stuff that's not even impacting the Hitching Post property? And I urge you to look at it, there's so much condition, they put it on that one, that will put the Hitching Post out of business within 12 months. I guarantee you guys that with all the condition, rest of the condition. We solved the problem with the lights, we can solve the problem with the noise, but all the other conditions, I'm letting everybody know that will put the Hitching Post out of business within 12 months. You, the city, council, everybody want to lose their tax dollars? Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is James Johnson. I live at 2319 North Cortez Road, Apache Junction, Arizona. I'd like to clarify a little bit about what Mr. Mo said about our confrontation at the fence. I was in our front yard along with my wife watering the flowers and I saw shadows down by the chain link fence. It's kind of odd out in the middle of nowhere to see shadows. So I went down the end of my driveway and challenged who it was. Very tactfully, just asked them if they had business there. They acknowledged it and it wanted to be in Mr. Mo and his cousin Z. I went across the street as a gentleman just to have casual conversation and somehow or another, the conversation was brought up into about the 12-foot wall. And it was, didn't have anything to do with about an eight-foot wall initially. I just kind of questioned what the backside of it or the Cortez side of that wall would look like. At that time, Mr. Mo brought up somehow or another, the conversation got twisted into the eight-foot block wall. And I told him I didn't think that the residents would go for it. But as a gentleman and as honest person as I am, I said that I would ask them about that. as honest person as I am, I said that I would ask them about that. I gave no guarantee. As far as to talk to, going to talk to Mr. Stern about it, that was the part of it, I'm pretty naive to some of the things and how they're run. I didn't know if, even after the cup had been signed, or the process of it, and where it was at, to whether any kind of a, per se, reconsideration or adjustment to it could be made. So I chose to go by Mr. Stern's office on Monday morning to ask him that. At that time, Mr. Stern walked into it, and he asked if my lawyer knew that, if I was there. I said, no, I couldn't, didn't even know why. Well, Mr. Stern, at that time, was already aware of the fact of about a conversation between Mr. Mo and I about an eight-foot wall, which I found rather odd. But anyway, Mr. Stern and I talked about that a little bit, and I told him that I was going out to the Hitching Post to talk to Mr. Mo, and to reassure him that the residents of the area had wanted nothing to do with an eight-foot wall to begin with, that we were perfectly happy with all the decisions that were made here on May 15th. So Mr. Mo was a little bit mistaken in how he explained to you that it was our kind of idea to get it changed to an eight-foot wall, because we never considered it at all in the first place. Thank you for your time.
Can you hand these out to the other members?
Can you tell me how I go fullscreen on this, please, Matt? Right here? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Jim Duncan, I live at 2745 Smoke Tree Street. As a point of reference, I'm going to go very quickly, because I only have five minutes. So there's many more residents along Cortez, and that is more affected, and somewhat just as affected when it comes to the walls. This is Nick Funk's house, 2273, that is his camera, located on his wall that's facing front, which is west, and the other window to that same bedroom is facing north, which is towards Mr. Johnson's house. The height of that camera is just about even with the windows, and from the inside of that bedroom, it measures seven feet to the top of the windowsill. This next picture is from that camera, taken at 7:42, which is about dusk now, May 24, Thursday. The car is shown entering the RV and boat storage lot from the Lost Dutchman entrance. This is the only entrance to this lot, and this is listed in the cup as the parking lot now to be converted for the Hitching Post. The six-foot white line pictured right here, right next to the six-foot, matches the six-foot fence that borders the parking lot, the RV boat and storage lot, that is the six-foot. I calculated what that is in this program, and created an eight-foot, and as you can clearly see, the eight-foot will not work for Nick Funk's house. This next slide shows what the 12-foot calculation would be, and that is exactly what is needed for Nick Funk to not get light pollution traspassed to his home. Secondly, I took the same calculation over here, where the bull riding fence is. Now, this is a six-foot fence here, too, that is a six-foot line, calculated it to the 12-foot needed for the noise barrier, and you can see, if you've only put the wall for the parking right here, it will not help Nick Funk when it comes to the noise barrier. There will be a four-foot gap, and the rest of the residents, because we don't live that close to the Hitching Post. I want to make it clear that condition number one was for the noise barrier, the condition number two was for the light barrier, the dust and the light and so forth, from the parking lot. I just have one clip to show you, actually, I do have two clips, I apologize, I'm sorry, these are really short. This is on May 31st, that same entrance, that is that camera, and this is on 6/2, which is just last Saturday. And I apologize for the videos, I know you had enough of them last meeting. So I'd just like to say, you got it right last May 15th, even though there was an amendment to the 12-foot needed, you got it right. You got it right according to the needs of the entire neighborhood, because you need the noise barrier, and you need the light barrier for the parking lot, if it's to be included, because right now, or before the cup was applied for, it was an RV and boat storage lot. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Bill Wallingford, I live at 2055 North Cortez Road, and I would like to thank all of you for the time you spent on your last meeting with, about the Hitching Post. You guys did a really good job talking about what needed to be done, and how it needed to be done, and you made the right decision then, so I would ask you not to do a reconsideration for this item tonight. Thank you very much, appreciate your work.
Good evening, Mayor and council, Patrick Leclerc, 2521 East Winsong. I'm one of the residents and an appellant, and I ask you to not reconsider this on the cup. You did get it right first time around, and we know we asked a lot of that out, I don't see the need to expend any more time or resources on this, so if you would, I ask you to deny this reconsideration on the motion. Thank you.
Mayor, city council, my name is Nick Funk, I live at 2273 North Cortez Road, Apache Junction here. Jim Duncan has it exactly right, is what you can see about this wall that's being presented to you, this 16, this 12-foot wall. We've been constantly bombarded with light, bombarded with the noise that's constantly going on, and it's getting to the point where it's bitten totally ridiculous. We are in agreement with the residents of the city of Apache Junction, to help you make a national decision to make regarding the Hitching Posts. We are in agreement with that, that was last, on both sides won at the meeting, it was a fair compromise for all who did. We need to spend more time and money to reconsider this cup. Please don't. If you bring this back at the future date to reconsider, you will be asking both sides to spend additional financial resources for their lawyers, they both had them on May 15th. We all know now expenses, how expensive attorneys are, can be, would be, why would you place this financial burden on both parties? Not to mention city staff, we will have to spend more of their valuable time and city financial resources to prepare again. Lastly, we will all be looking at another five-hour meeting, which is about how long that meeting was on May 15th. Please vote no to reconsider this agenda on this item. Thank you.
My name is Richard Beavers, and I live at 2225 North Cortez. I'm what you call the new guy in town, we've been there for about 14 months, and had I known what was going on, probably would not have bought the house. Anyway, you guys did get it right on May 15th, and I don't know why it's being reconsidered, but you got it right the last time. And the noise pollution affects me, the light pollution doesn't, but we're all in this together, and being a 24/7 caregiver for my wife, it's getting a little upsetting a lot of times, makes her very nervous, she gets frightened by the noise and stuff like that, so I highly suggest you vote no on this reconsideration. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, my name is Mark Theismann, I live at 2395 North Cortez Road. I echo the feelings of the rest of the neighbors. Please vote no on this, this has been drug out for a very, very long time. You all came to an agreement, a 7-0 vote, that we would accept the stipulations that were put in the initial cup. I am a little confused about a few things, and one of them is the triple, you know, the fences. I know I can't ask any questions, but maybe you can cover this when you have your discussion. But it needs two 12-foot fences, and if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Rizzi, I think you are the one that brought up the 12-foot fences as well. Excuse me. I urge you to please vote no. We have animals at our house, we are very early risers, we were up 3:30, 3:00 or 3:30 in the morning, every morning, seven days a week, and due to the noise and the light pollution that comes into our house, it's becoming very unbearable, extremely unbearable. So please vote no to reconsider any part of this cup. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Christina Driscoll, 1852 North Goldfield Road. I too am exposed to that, despite all of the distance, we're sitting up a little bit higher, so I'm aware of what all of my neighbors are going through, so I'm just here to echo what they're asking of you, not to waste any more time or resources on this. You know, the decision was made, it's been a long time coming, everyone's tired, and we actually have an agreement on both sides. I'd hate to put that in jeopardy. So I just wanted to thank you all for your time on that, and please, don't reconsider. Thank you.
Diana Kessler, 2521 East Winsong Street. On May 25th, like everyone said, you made a unanimous decision, it was a good decision, we compromised, both sides won, you as a city council took into consideration the residents of Apache Junction and their quality of life, as well as the business owners' need to expand and grow his business. So I'm asking that you please say no to reconsidering the motion, or reconsidering the CUP. More time will be spent, which doesn't need to be done, a great deal of money will be spent, including city finances, so please honor your decision from May 15th, and vote no on reconsidering the CUP. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and councilman, my name is Bambi Lynn Johnson, and I live at 2319 North Cortez Road. I am directly to the east of the parking lot behind the Hitching Post. On May 15th, there was a long meeting, and a lot of things were discussed. At the end of it, there was a line-by-line discussion of every single condition, and at the end of that, one compromise was made, that was voted on, and then there was a unanimous vote by all members that this was the best decision for all involved. I heard several things tonight about the time that's over there. I'd like to point out that because I live directly behind there, and my camera is the most direct over there, I can see the exact number of cars that are there. There was, the very first Thursday night after that meeting, they held the bull riding from 7:00 to 9:00. I can tell you, and I can prove that by my cameras, that the volume in the parking lot was exactly the same thing within two cars of the previous Thursday, which ran from 8:00 to 10:00, so it did not affect business at all. What I can tell you it affected was I got to sleep at a decent time, I woke up refreshed, and I went to my job feeling good. That was the only night since that vote, since I have no idea which one is in place. I don't know if we're in place at 8:00 to 10:00, I don't know if we're in place at 7:00 to 9:00. All I know is, I had one great night. The neighbors, we all talked about the fact that we got to bed, and we got rest. All the parties have worked very hard, this isn't just a two-meeting event, this has been something that's been going on for a while. It's not just whether it went to P&amp;Z, or whether it came here. This is 104 nights a year. You're talking about one-third of our nights of our lives every year. We ask that you give back a little bit of that by standing by what you stood up for. You just changed your mission statement, and one of the things I noticed was the fact that you put residents first. I'm hoping that you meant that not as a slogan, but because you believe that the residents of Apache Junction should come as a first priority. We may not have a property tax here, but sales tax, I know, that generates a lot for the community. If we paid property tax, maybe our vote or our opinions would matter more, but I can tell you that no one that I know of, who's a citizen of Apache Junction, feels like they don't matter. We feel like you are there as our representatives, our voice, our concern, and our well-being depends on each and every one of you to not only step up, but stand up for what you have voted. I ask you to please vote no on any reconsideration for this cup. I thank you.
Krista wants to ask a question in between, if we can, is that possible to legal?
Well, I would suggest.
She said she can wait.
I would reserve that until after everybody's spelled.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Nardall, I live at 885 North Vista Road in Apache Junction. I do not live near the Hitching Post, but I am here to represent my fellow neighbors and citizens of Apache Junction. In reading your agenda this evening, I happened to see that this is a representative government that we have here in Apache Junction, and that policies are set by you, the mayor, and the council that are elected by us. We put you where you're at, and we hope that you represent all of the citizens of Apache Junction. And the reason for the public hearings is so you can be fully informed of our opinions, and that's what we're here tonight to give you. It's my understanding that all you're voting on tonight is whether to bring this whole issue back up again for reconsideration. All the other things that Mo was talking about, that he's going to go out of business if he has to do a study on the traffic and whatnot, that's, it has nothing to do with tonight. We do not want you to bring this thing back up for reconsideration, especially since you all spent all that time and energy talking about it in sessions, in study sessions, reading the agenda over and over, going over everything, all those different conditions, and I agree with the lady, both sides were in agreement, I think we walked away from it that evening, feeling good about it, and when I opened up the newspaper Monday morning at my local cafe, and saw that you guys were going to bring it back up again, I said to my husband, you have got to be kidding me. I thought it was over, they voted 7:00 to 0:00, so what else is there to consider? It sounds to me like you've got somebody that asked his dad for something, and he said no, and he's going to wait and ask again, hoping that it'll get changed. That's what it sounds like to me. But please, you guys did your job, you spent all that time and effort, and we really appreciate it, but I do not think that you should bring this back up again. But I do not think that you should bring this back up again. And I really hope that you vote not to reconsider it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Krista, you had a question.
Joel, what were to happen if, first of all, is it possible for the original applicant of the CUP to come back and ask to withdraw? Is that possible to do?
Do you mean tonight, or you mean in the future?
No, no. In the future, is it possible for the business owner to come back to the city and say that he wants to withdraw the CUP?
Well, the CUP has been granted. It's been signed. The CUP has conditions. So although it's in place, however, there's conditions. Conditions precedent, and that's what the legal term is. For him to get the benefit of the CUP, he has to do certain things. For example, the hours, it was changed to seven. However, that condition does not take place, and that will not cut in until Mr. Modine has done the conditions, which includes several things. There's a list of them. He has six months to do certain things and twelve months to do others. I know this is a very long explanation to get to your answer. However, I think I should mention that yes, the answer is yes. He can do that at one point. And he would be asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to do it. It would not be the city council. So at one point, he could make that request, and it'd be up to the Planning and Zoning Commission to withdraw it, or modify other terms. He can do that also. And it'd be up to the Planning and Zoning, because in two thousand and fourteen, the city council changed the city code or agreed to, they voted to change the city code, so that the Planning and Zoning Commission actually had that authority. And the only way you all would get it would be with an appeal. That's how you have it today, or that's why you are here today on this motion for reconsideration.
So if the business applicant, the original, the business owner applicant were to come back and to ask to repeal that CUP, it would go in front of Planning and Zoning. If Planning and Zoning were to grant that CUP to be repealed, what would happen?
If they revoked it? Then the development agreement, which is still in play, essentially, he'd be working under that development agreement, which means the current bull riding, which is done Thursdays and Saturdays, it'd be the eight-to-ten hour, eight-to-ten hour period. However, there'd be no events that he could do, except for certain events that don't have amplified music. The parking to the, to the east of the Bull Ring, I'm sorry, okay. He cannot use that under the current development agreement. That is not, if you take a look at the current development agreement's site plan, that does not include, I think it's Parcel C, it does not include parking. So all the parking has to be on the west side of the restaurants. That's where the parking is supposed to take place. Same with the truck storage yard. That is not part of the CUP.
So if this, if the applicant, the business owner, were to come back and ask to repeal that, and he were granted to repeal the CUP, we would go back to the development agreement? And this would all be a wash. There would be no conditions?
Then we'd be back to where we were last year, where there were some violations. And that was the whole point of trying to get a CUP, to put everything under one document and not a development agreement. And we agreed to do that. So this was like a placeholder until the CUP was passed. The CUP has been passed. So if tonight you decided not to go with this motion, the CUP would continue on, and the timelines have started for him to do these, there's five things under time limits. And then if he doesn't want to do it, or can't financially do it, and if he wanted to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, he could ask for them to revoke.
And then there would be none of these conditions?
These conditions would not apply, but he'd be under the development agreement conditions, which, I mean, some people say they're generous, some people say they're not, but they're definitely not as generous as the CUP.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if only, okay, we got to the point for the CUP because of a compliance agreement with the city for his zoning violation for using the RV and car parking lot. That's what got us to this point. So if he voids the CUP, then he goes back to where he cannot park in that area at all. It has a statement for some nights overflow parking. It's kind of vague what it says. But we go back to the original agreement, and there's no expansion to the east. There's no other events, the cornhole, the volleyball. All of that goes away. Correct?
Correct. We'd go back to the pre, it'd be, I think it was October or November when it was signed. This was signed in eleven, on eleven-twenty-seven, and I think he filed his CUP on December thirtieth or December thirty-first. So it'd be before that time. And the parking wasn't the only issue. There were other issues. There was frustration on Mr. Modine's side. He felt that every time he got a complaint that the city was doing something against him, and he was tired of that, and he wanted to basically get a CUP to take care of those other conditions.
And it had to do with his expansion on his own with-
Without-
Without the development agreement-
Correct.
Including it. And that was part of why we got here.
Correct.
So he has violations in place with the city that his business cannot expand. He can't do the events he wanted to do if he gets rid of the CUP.
Well, you said in the present tense violations, I'd have to defer to Rudy or Larry on any present violations. However, there were violation notices, and that's what led us to this compliance agreement.
Well, the violation is using the RV boat storage lot for parking.
And you're talking about to the eastern lot that is directly east of the Hitching Post Arena?
And in the development agreement, he said that everyone had to come through the restaurant, where now they're coming through the back, apparently, too. So those kind of issues that he did on his own without permission created the violations that got us to, if you get a CUP, then I guess perhaps he thought if you got a CUP, he wouldn't have to do anything else or make any changes.
Well, to be fair to the applicant, I don't want to say violations, because they were never actually proven in court, but they're allegations of violations.
He was given notice.
He was given notice of violations. Correct.
I'd remind everybody that we didn't spend that much time on it like P and Z. P and Z had a completely different recommendation, and we completely went against it and came up with a different one. So, which is why we have a P and Z. What about if, I don't see any reason to have this traffic study. Why, it's not gonna change anything if we have those. What, and why should it cost thirty thousand dollars to lay a couple cables across the road? And what does that, how does that really tie into this, and why force that in?
I don't know what the cost would be. I'm not an engineer, but I think I should defer to Rudy or Larry on the issue of why a traffic study is needed when there is an intense use proposed for development.
Well, I guess my question would then be, why is it on the highway instead of where the neighbors are on Cortez?
Yeah.
The study should have been where the neighbors are, because they're the ones that are impacted.
Typically, on a study like that, that would, the scope of the study would be decided at the time of the study by the engineer. That's my understanding. Rudy or Larry, could you address that? If I may, Your Honor, if they can't come up-
Any, me, me.
While Larry's coming up, we had some time in between, and I did talk to Emile from Public Works. And the type of traffic analysis impact study that is needed here is a ten to twelve thousand dollar expense from our public works standpoint.
And I'm asking, why is it needed?
Right.
Because it's there anyway. This agreement happens with or without the traffic study. So why add the added burden?
I think because based on the application, there wasn't really a determination on the impacts of the proposed development, what is the scale of the development. So we had heard that there were concerts, that three, four hundred people were gonna be there. I think, to me, there was ample evidence that people were parking on the west side of the street of Apache Trail for an event on the east side, and people were crossing the street. They, my understanding and hearing the person that came up that owned the property across the street, they didn't have permission to park on this gentleman's property, and yet they were parking on the property. So it tells me that the parking was inadequate. I think the sight lines on the corner, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think people already recognize that the skew angle of that corner, there's some sight visibility issues that people have been complaining about for a long time. So ADOT, yes, there's through traffic, but a traffic study actually determines what are the impacts of a proposed development. So we didn't get that ahead of time. So because we don't know what the impacts are based on the scale and the scope of what he wanted to do-
Shouldn't that have been done first, then?
The applicant makes an application, and we react to it. We don't, we don't have something that says, and that would be up to the city engineer to say, "Okay, here's what warrants a traffic study."
So if you see, if you do a traffic study and you see different numbers, are you gonna come back and change it again?
Well-
Why?
What the traffic study would be is what, like Fries, Fries did a traffic study, okay? So we knew that they had to have a deceleration lane. We knew they wanted a center turn lane across the Old West Highway.
But this is already, like you said, a seven to oh vote. So why do the traffic study now?
It's a condition of, the recommendation of the Planning Commission was that a traffic study, because part of the project could go forward, but what if ADOT wants a decel lane?
Because of a higher-
Because of the additional impacts of the event center that was gonna happen there.
This would all change again, then, if the numbers come in differently?
No, the requirement to do a traffic study is a condition. Then there would be a requirement possibly of putting in a decel lane, of perhaps there would become, I don't, I doubt ADOT would have a four-way stop, but maybe they would put a roundabout there, or say, "Okay, five years from now, there needs to be this because of this impact."
So did a private business pay for a traffic study on the roundabout? ADOT would do that. It's their road. Let them do it.
But typically, an applicant that's proposing a development and an increase in intensity of use would be required to do some sort of traffic analysis, traffic study, to say, "Here are the impacts of the development." So the city can adequately evaluate them.
After the fact.
Well, we already know that there's problems there now. I think there was ample evidence to show-
What would the study tell us? Would it tell us, it reaffirm that it's, a decel lane's not needed, or it is needed, or what?
There could be an acceleration lane in front of the Elks. There could be a deceleration lane to turn here. There's very little, the right-of-way in that area is actually a little bit less than what there is in the other parts of the corridor. But the whole purpose of a traffic study is to figure out what are the impacts, if any. Maybe it'll turn out that there aren't impacts, but we don't know. We don't know if there are impacts. So that's why you do the study. So a traffic engineer certified to do a traffic study doesn't just go out and count traffic, but based on the level of activity there, they would make a recommendation as to whether any more road improvements might be needed.
Who would do those improvements? Would it be?
The applicant, unless ADOT at some point says, "Well, we're gonna do this anyway."
Right.
So the Hitching Post would have to construct a deceleration line, lane?
If that's what the traffic study indicated, and that's what the recommendation of the staff would be.
And it's a safety-
But again, I don't see that different, that we're looking at a development out on Goldfield right now of a hundred and seventy-seven homes. That's a couple thousand trips a day.
You're doing-
They don't come in and just put the development in without weighing whether there's impacts or not.
You're just saying you're doing that first. You're not doing it after the hundred and seventy-seven homes come in.
We're saying that as part of the planning process, then I guess what we should have done is not accepted his application until he made the traffic study.
As a bull riding, yeah.
Or that there could have been a traffic study the first time this came around, five years ago.
As a staff, there's a status quo X. Now we got X plus Y in front of us, and so we're reacting to that potential. That's, I guess that's how we would look at that.
It's just uncommon to have a business or on a state road, a state highway. It's considered a highway. And that's, that's the issue, is that, is that normally it would, the impact isn't, it's not on a state highway. I think that's where the concern comes in. My concern is that these folks don't live on eighty-eight. They live on Cortez. And that's not a state highway. So that's-
But if there was a development on Ironwood that was gonna have significant impacts, even though it's a city street and not a state highway, I think it's prudent to ask for a traffic analysis of what are the impacts of that development going to have on whether the existing traffic patterns that are there, accident history, et cetera, whether there should be a different type of access to the property, move the access. Maybe it should be right-in, right-out only. Those are all things that happen in a traffic study.
Your Honor, I find it interesting that when this whole thing started, when Mo first started with the Hitching Post out there, there were pretty substantial impact fees that were gonna be required, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, as I recall. And the city council waived those because they said the impact would be minimal. It was just gonna be a pizza place and a convenience store, and that was all it's gonna be. So they waived the sixty thousand dollar impact fee. And now that the impact has increased, he's arguing that he can't afford to pay the impact, the study, for the impact that this development has created. So initially, the city gave him the sixty thousand, said, "Yeah, it's a low-impact business." Now it's increased dramatically, and we're asking him to do this study for ten or twenty thousand, whatever it is. And they're balking on that. I don't get that. That, the impact has increased substantially. A traffic study will tell you what's needed for safety. So I don't understand what, what the logic is here. We gave him sixty thousand dollars. We didn't, the council ended. And now we're asking for a study. I think that's fair. I have another question for Joel.
I think my five minutes are up.
No, it isn't.
Joel, there is currently, I don't know how many violations are tied to the Hitching Post currently. Are there several, or one or two, or?
Once again, I think Larry has, would have some of that information. I'm not the code compliance expert, but I don't know if there are existing allegations of violations.
Isn't there one, isn't there something that's being held in abeyance because of the CUP? That any enforcement action's been stayed?
There were two violations noted. One was operating outside of the hours. There was activities that were happening either before eight o'clock or after ten o'clock. There were some activities that happened on a Saturday morning, I believe. There was, and I didn't verify it, but there was advertising of goat roping on Sundays, which I don't know if it ever took place, but maybe it did, but that was on a Sunday. That was use of the arena outside of that time. What probably could have been a violation was converting the, the convenience store to a restaurant. So the site plan that Mr. Stern referenced says what kind of land uses take place. And one Lot C, or Parcel C, was not supposed to be used for parking. Well, if you look at the plan, it shows the Hitching Post, the pizza parlor, and then it shows the convenience store, which had a few tables in it, beer coolers, sold bait, et cetera. Well, that was converted to a restaurant. So I think you could actually go back and say that was a violation of the Economic Development Agreement. But we didn't pursue that. But I think, looking back, it probably was a violation of the Development Agreement.
Thank you.
So Joel, so let's just say nothing happens. We, we don't reconsider, and the CUP stays in place, but Mo decides not to fulfill any of the timed requirements, the six-month and the one-year things. The CUP is still there, and that means that the original development agreement is gone, right?
Not exactly.
Okay.
The original development agreement is still in play. In fact, that's what he's currently operating under. Yes, there's a CUP, but once again, it doesn't really take the full effect until the conditions. And like I said, there's twenty-eight conditions, but five of them have time deadlines-
Right.
For the walls.
And so if he chooses, if the CUP stays in place, and he chooses not to abide by the requirements the requirements that would move the rest of the CUP forward, really, nothing would change. What, nothing would change what was there before December thirty-first, or whatever it was when he submitted the CUP application.
I think what you're asking is if he doesn't do anything, what happens?
Yeah.
The time, and if the time passes and nothing is done, at one point, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the staff would probably bring it to the Planning- and Zoning Commission, uh, the, the staff would probably bring it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they'd say, here's what has been done since, and at one point, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission, or I'm sorry, the planning staff will have a recommendation that it be revoked because the conditions have not been met. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission could then revoke the CUP, and then essentially he'd be under the development agreement, that does not go away automatically.
Okay.
And actually, that, the Planning and Zoning Commission cannot terminate the development agreement, only the city council can, because you all signed it and it's a development agreement under nine dash five hundred, I believe.
I'll hold you to that one.
ARS.
I have a question. So council can reserve the right to revoke both the economic development agreement and, or the CUP, correct?
No, only the development agreement, the CUP can only be revoked by the Planning and Zoning Commission because you vested the jurisdiction to them when you changed the zoning code. So they have that jurisdiction to do it.
But the development agreement, the council can revoke that?
Yes, that would have to be placed before the council in a fully noticed hearing, and it'd be a public hearing, and then, um, you would make the decision.
And so for the non-compliance, for the violations that he had with the development agreement, the council can re, revoke that, correct? For, for the, for, for violations of that agreement, after that process goes through, then the council could revoke that.
I think you're talking about the compliance agreement, is that what?
Yes, that came into effect because of the zoning violations.
Right, and that.
So if he doesn't correct, if those violations that he had prior to the compliance agreement, i- if those continue, what I'm asking is, then the council can revoke the economic development agreement, that he has to be in compliance with what we've required of him, like any other applicant.
In order to, uh, terminate the development agreement, there'd have to be, there has to be good cause, so it would be based on violations, and if there are violations, so there'd have to probably be some violation enforcement action before the council even considers doing that.
There's a process.
There is a process that, and, and it includes notices to Mr. Moadeen and a chance to basically comply with the letter.
Can we hear from Krista?
Um, so Joel, there's a process in order for the, um, the development agreement, as Gail was talking about, to be revoked by the council, there's a process, it's not just a matter of a council member coming forward and saying, look, I wanna put this on the agenda, we're gonna take a look at this, there ha, there's a process, there has to be violations, he has to be cited, or whatever, there's a process, and what is the process then? Say it goes that far, then what's the process? Who brings it to the agenda for the council to revoke the, uh, development agreement? Because that's not an easy process.
Uh, no, it would start at staff level, and once again, there'd have to be allegations of violations, they have to be confirmed, then a letter would go out, uh, what, it might be a twenty-day letter, I'm not sure, what, what, I think it's a twenty-day letter, is that correct, Larry? Twenty-one day, okay, and that'd be a notice of violation, and then actually, that could be technically, because it's a zoning administrator making that determination, uh, it could be appeal to the board of adjustment. I mean, that is a possibility technically.
Here's my concern with all of this, if we don't reconsider, my concern is right now, the CUP being in place provides a compromise for both parties, it provides relief for neighbors, there seems to be some concern about the looks of the backside of the, the appearance of the backside of this western facade or whatever. Anyhow, my, my point is, without a recon, with, if we don't take a look at a couple of these items and reconsider, he can pull the CUP and they have no protection, then we're right back to square one.
Well, I, I don't know about no protection, I mean, there is a process for enforcement of the city code, and that is something that the planning department and the zoning administrator, that is their job to, to enforce the city code, and that includes the zoning code, and also property maintenance, so if it's just the development agreement that's in place, if there's zoning code violations that are beyond the scope of the development agreement, then yeah, those should be enforced.
But under just the development agreement and not the conditions of the CUP, the neighbors have a lot less protection with the noise and that we're right back to the development agreement and we're right back to square one, that's my concern.
And that was the point of having a conditional use permit, correct? And that was a better case than having a development agreement, but this is a very complicated case, that's why the development agreement can't just go away immediately. He, Mr. Moadeen has to be given due process of the law to do these conditions.
But a CUP could.
Under the CUP.
But a CUP could go away relatively easily, not real easy, but a lot easier than the development agreement.
Yes, that is easier because it's at the Planning and Zoning Commission level. Once again, that decision can then go to the council, technically, that could be appealed to the council, because it's a decision of the planning and zoning, because the jurisdiction is best with the Planning and Zoning Commission under this current zoning code.
Yep, you and Krista brought this.
Just one last comment, um, you know, normally when something comes up for reconsideration, it's because there's new evidence to be presented, and so far, there hasn't been any new evidence presented that would, to me, there should be taken into consideration to alter anything. It's, it's, you know, it's, uh, nine o'clock, and it's ninety-five degrees, so I, I, the argument for, and I care about animals, changing the hours, to me, doesn't, doesn't seem significant.
They don't have to have the sun, you're out of the sun at, at that time.
Just my, my point of view.
I obviously have a problem with the traffic study.
Okay.
After the fact. So that, just to ask, just a clarification, um, if, if we were to choose to vote for a reconsideration of the CUP and put it into July or whenever it would be, would, does the motion that we make tonight for reconsideration, can we put in what can be reconsidered, or is the whole CUP reconsidered at that point?
It would be preferred that you, you limit the scope if you're going to, if you're gonna just say, okay, it's gonna be item number one, for condition number one, and hopefully, that would be in the motion, otherwise, it could be everything if you don't limit the scope. So then technically, you could have another five-hour meeting, because we don't have a procedure where we limit the time, um, written into the, the zoning code on applicant presentations.
But as it was said, I, and I, I gotta be honest with you, I don't, I haven't drawn a diagram with all twenty-eight stipulations, requirements of it as to which ones, um, pertain to which ones as far as, you know, if he does a time, if the six-month thing happens, which of the other ones, uh, will take place, so I haven't done a, a diagram of that nature. So if we were to put in a, a motion tonight and say we're, and I'm just throwing these out there, I don't even, I'm not memorized all the motions or all the requirements, let's say we say we're going to reconsider one, six, eight, and twenty-two, but then those have something to pertain to some of the other requirements, does that then open up the other requirements?
I would say no, because it would pertain only to the named numbers, so if they happen to, if their house, happens to be a nexus with another one of the conditions, I don't think you can change the other condition because you did not name it.
I think that's why Ralph Pugh warned against limiting it.
Well, that's what I.
Well, but there could be arguments made on every single, I mean, I could make the argument that every single condition is dependent on all the other ones, I mean, so I'm not sure that's, and no disrespect to Mr. Pugh, none at all, but I mean, I mean that, yes, if you open it up to everything, I mean, I know, uh, Mr. Moadeen presented something to the city council, uh, I saw a writing before the council meeting, and I think the city manager received it, and I think there's a whole bunch of conditions that, uh, they want changed, so, and it's, it's almost all of them, so I don't know if you're gonna, if you're gonna, there's some strikeouts and there's some deletions, so I don't know if, if you're gonna use that document when you make your motion, if there's gonna be a motion, and I don't know, I don't know where this is going, so.
My, my idea was on bringing this back was concerning the, the fencing, um, the locations of it, um, and the hours of operation only, and limit it to those two, um, subjects. I don't have the, the, the numbers on it, can we do just using the words, or do we have to have it down to the exact?
You mean, you don't have the condition numbers, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Actually, it's in the packet. If you don't have it.
I, I have a quick question.
Does he, actually, can I just, does, does, um, does he have it, Matt, does he have the conditions? And it would, you, you need to, you need to actually state the condition number if you're gonna make a motion, because otherwise, it gets very confusing.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, I don't have, I have, I have a floor, I thought, but.
What, what Chip means is he did not have time to mark which specific ones he would wanna look at.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, but they should be named specifically, um, otherwise, if you just say the, the wall, well, that could pertain to different numbers, so it needs to say actual conditions if you're gonna make a motion.
Krista, when, when you made the comment that the fencing had doubled and tripled, what, what fencing are you talking about, that doubled or tripled?
The twelve-foot wall.
The what?
The twelve-foot wall, the, the western facade that we, um, wanted to continue around.
The perimeter.
Down Lost Dutchman and.
The perimeter wall.
Well, it goes between his house, along the backside of his house, and again, without having the map from the last meeting, but I'm going off my memory, which isn't the greatest, but it goes, it, it goes between his house and the, the arena, up Lost Dutchman, and then back down, um, Cortez, if I remember correctly.
Okay, so the only piece that.
So that's condition number two, Krista?
I, I didn't hear that, Rob, and I'm sorry.
She's asking if it's number two.
The piece that we added was along the north side of the house.
Right.
That was the only piece, so that really didn't double anything, that just, it was one additional section of fence.
I don't see why it has to be in front of the Elks at all.
After everything that we've heard tonight, and all of this that I studied all day long, I really, you know, the traffic study is a safety issue, and I think that's something that the city needs to take very seriously, and definitely, it is a higher intensely-use area than what it originally was, so, yes, it's after the fact, but it's before a new factor comes into play. I think for the council to add that one section of fence really doesn't count as a doubling or tripling, and I think we got it right the first time, and I really don't see any need to change anything.
Chip, are you getting numbers down there?
Yes, I got them.
Did you wanna take a break so you can get them down? Would you like to have a break? I'm just asking for Chip's.
Yeah.
Well, go ahead.
Robin, do you need a break?
I can take a break anytime I want to.
Just, just mute your phone, would you? So, uh, we are getting asked for a break, so we're gonna ask for a five-minute recess. Robin, are you back with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting back into order.
Okay.
So we're not necessarily quite ready for a motion, is there any more discussion? It looks like there may.
Your Honor?
We're gonna call for a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. I move that the conditions of resolution number eighteen dash twenty-one will be reconsidered at a public hearing at the city council meeting of January, I believe it's eighteenth?
Jan.
Oh, January, excuse me, July, excuse me, July, I looked at J.
Actually, what'd you say, which date?
July eighteenth.
No, that'd be the seventeenth, that's a Tuesday night.
Seventeenth, thank you. At seven PM at city council session, at the scope of the public hearing discussion and reconsideration will be for the fencing and operation hours only, sections one, two,
Do we have a second? Or do you wanna, can they add anything like traffic studies or anything?
Well, you've asked for a second.
Does Chip wanna clarify what those two were?
What are those sections that you are looking at?
Sections one and two are concerning the, uh, the fencing and, uh, the, the locations of them, um, because of the discussion and the idea of not necessarily having it on the, the fencing on the, uh, north side, um, and the, uh, the twelve-foot, and the section along, um, the house, and, uh, around the, uh, I, I agree with around the bull riding area, um, but wherever they mentioned fencing is where I, why I picked one and two.
Anything on the traffic study?
I did not pick this traffic study.
And number eight are the hours of the bull riding.
Which is on, on front of you in your screen right now.
Okay, yeah, number eight is the, uh, the hours of operation, and I'd like to see that to be more conducive to the.
And this is just for discussion, by the way, this is not.
It's not, it's not making a decision.
We could, we could hear about the effect of the sun on a horse and that.
I guess it dies.
Not yet, it's still, still hanging there. Robin, did you make a second?
No, I did not. Sorry about that.
Okay, I will, I'll second it.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I have a substitute motion.
Okay.
I moved that the reconsideration of the conditions for resolution number eighteen twenty-one hitching post conditional use permit event center be denied.
Second.
You have to vote on the substitute motion first.
Okay. Is that correct, Joel?
That is correct.
So the second one that Dave just made would be voted on?
Yeah, the motion to deny, uh, should be voted on now, because it's been seconded.
Okay, and I seconded the first one.
Right, but the way Robert's rules is, if, if that, and if Dave's motion passes, then it's done.
Okay. So Dave, so just, council member Waldron made a, a amendment, or I'm just trying to understand the.
It's, it's called a motion to substitute, um, or amendment, and it's, it's basically takes the place of the first motion, but if it doesn't pass, then the first motion does get voted on.
So we'll call for a roll. So we'll call for a roll call? There was a second? Yes.
No.
And we're voting on to deny the consideration-
Correct.
The request for consideration. Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Councilmember Rizzi?
I hate to do this, but I'm gonna vote yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
No.
Five in favor, two opposed. The substitute motion to deny the first motion is approved.
Okay, do we have a motion on the next set of meetings?
Your Honor, I move that an executive session at six PM and a work session at seven PM be held on Monday, June eighteen, twenty eighteen, in the city council conference room, and the city council changes respectively, and that an executive session at six PM be held on Tuesday, June nineteen, twenty eighteen, in the city council conference room.
Roll call.
Councilmember Rizzi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Councilmember Barker?
Yes.
Councilmember Struble?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldron?
Yes.
Mayor Sertie?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
This is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Each speaker must have already filled out a request to speak for him and handed it to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on the issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff for follow-up with the speaker directly and/or place this matter on a future agenda for council discussion. There's a three-minute limit for each speaker, and I have one, George Schroeder.
George Schroeder, two four four four, West Virginia, Apache Junction. I am glad that there's really good programs in our city for the kids and for the runners and the people that put it together, the donations that we got, especially for the animals. I'm an animal lover, thank you. As I told you before, I have a condition right now that affects my speaking. So if it does get loud, I apologize. Two things. Mr. Hazel's proposal for bid is good. But his other insinuation that the Supreme Court, I think he's talking about Arizona Supreme Court, says that we need to have more indigent workers helping us with our city. I want to see that. That should be made public. I don't believe him. Just because he's a judge does not mean he's right. Anyway, I want, just brought to public attention that we can see that. Because I don't think it's right. I don't think they're asking him, or this court, or this city to do anything. I think they want it for free, and that's his basis. Domestic terrorism for profit. Anyway, next. Today, I went down to Florence talking to an FBI staff member. He's concerned that the city of Apache Junction is on a slippery slope, such as indecision, things that shouldn't affect the city but are. Programs that we're involved in and being forced to be a part of, such as MAG and IGAs and all this. That's what got Arizona City in trouble. Okay, anybody, anybody, it's bad, really bad. That's no longer a viable city for anything anymore. And I don't want Apache Junction to be there either, okay? Like I said, we don't want to be just a district in the shadow of Mesa on the way out to take all that BLM land and public trust land. They're gonna take it. Pam Gulp already told us. They're gonna take it. Superstition, vandalism, remember that? She already told us they're gonna take it. We need to stop that. And kudos to our friends in Gold Canyon. You need us. You need us. As much as we need you, you need us. We run interception for you folks. Whatever affects us affects you. We need to be together. We need to think together. Need to be together. Thank you very much.
Anyone care to respond? In which case, we'll adjourn the meeting.